Good evening. It's a pleasure being here. Thank you. I want to first give my congratulations to all the recipients, teachers, administrators, clerical staff, custodian. Congratulations. Your dedication, hard work, and your passion for helping the students in these schools is very much thankful, and I appreciate everything that you do. Especially Bonnie Rondo, I want to give a shout out goodbye. She loved you. I'll keep this brief. You know, I get a lot of calls as the mayor from the city, about millions of them. And, you know, I got the calls Monday about the unfortunate incidents and the fights that were here at the high school. And I had a very productive meeting today. And I want to thank Chairman Boje, Superintendent McGee, Chief Vokes. We had a great meeting in my office about what the city, and I'm talking about the administration side of it, what we can do to help. As a parent of two former Woodsocket High School graduates, I know it's difficult. And also, you know, I know many teachers put their heart and soul into their profession. And we want to make sure not only are our teachers and staff safe, are students are safe, and what we can do as a community, because we're all partners. It's just not the school department's issue. It's a city issue. It's our community partners' issue. It's our public safety issue. It involves all of us. And I'll pledge this, as long as I'm the mayor of the city of Woodsocket, I will continue to have dialogue with anybody and everybody on how we can do things better. Whether that's at City Hall, school department, parks, what you name it. I am invested fully into this city, not just because I'm the mayor, but I've lived here all my life. And again, I talked to a couple of parents about what happened. And of course, I didn't have all the details because it was a volley. But again, Dr. McGee, Superintendent, we all had a very good meeting today, and I pledge to you to do whatever I can to help. As a parent, I was so much surprised when I heard today that there is no PTO at the high school. And I think there should be one. You know, parents have a say in this, obviously. So if you want to have a say, let's create a PTO again. I'd be glad to get clout even though I don't have any kids in the system. Because your voice is needed, your thoughts and ideas should be included, and what you all do as a school committee to make things different and better. And I know we don't have all the answers, and I surely don't. But I can tell you, we work better together when we do things together. A couple of little quick things. I know we have another football game Friday night, and I want to thank the athletic department and all the coaches and everybody that had a great opening night a week ago Friday. I wasn't able to attend, but I just want to point out a couple of things. We're still working on the games, right? The score of the speakers, we're trying to turn it down for the Navies. The parking, we've worked with the school department about various parking alternatives, whether that be at the middle school, the high school, Cass Park, because the lot at the athletic complex, which holds about 150 parking spots, will be filled up pretty rapidly. So I ask you to please be cognizant of Newland Avenue, One Way Street, Nettie Street, excuse me, and be cognizant of the neighbors. Please don't block their driving ways. Please take your time, wait the city limit, because there are people that live there. We want to enjoy this complex, we will enjoy this complex for many, many years to come. We are going to work on some of the issues that, you know, I've discussed. And I want to thank everybody for being involved. And listen, we have a lot of positive things that's happening in this city. We have our challenges also, but working together, we can solve them. And the last thing I'll say is, this is a great tool, and it can be the bane of my existence sometimes, right? And I think in schools, kids are there to learn. And having these with them all the time, I think this should be a conversation about putting these down or there to learn. Thank you.
David Andrews, Woodsocket High School's social studies teacher, Woodsocket Teachers Guild Vice President of Woodsocket High School and Woodsocket Area Career and Technical Center, 68 Carveland Street. Last school year, several hundred teachers, students, and parents gathered here to implore the school committee and wet administration to do something to address unsafe and unsecure conditions at Woodsocket Public Schools. I'm here to ask those same questions once again. At that meeting last school year, I pointed out that there were far too many students at Woodsocket High School wandering the halls, going to multiple lunches, and contributing to disciplinary problems as a result of this behavior. I asked that we find some way to increase personnel in the halls, especially during transition times and lunchtime, but also to patrol the halls during class time. I certainly realize that public schools are on a budget, but I know that we need to do something in order to address these problems before something potentially tragic occurs. I would like to think that Monday's five fights and 13 arrests at the high school during the school day were an anomaly. But whether they were or not, we need to do something about increasing the security of our schools. I'm sure my middle school and elementary colleagues have had similar situations at their schools and feel the same way about this. However this can be accomplished, I again ask that some type of action be taken. These incidences and their severity have increased in the past several years. It would be most regrettable if a tragedy were to occur as a result of lack of preparedness or lack of personnel. Cell phones are contributing to the disorder. Although a statewide cell phone ban has been passed, and Woodsocket schools already technically have a cell phone ban in place, cell phones are under present in our schools. They're usually exacerbated by situations like fights, with students rushing to the scene in order to get video of the fight. These fights have been posted on Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, et cetera. There is even an Instagram site, which I was not aware of until the other day, called Moony Fights 25, that catalogs the fights between students. This is just another distraction caused by cell phones. Just about every student in the school has a cell phone, and attempting to police cell phone usage is like handing out speeding tickets at the Indy 500. After the fights on Monday, some high school staff noticed later that evening that several people had posted recruiting pictures for local charter schools on the Facebook Woodsocket Community page. I know one thing that all public school administrators, teachers, and staff definitely agree on is that charter schools siphon away funds from the public schools. And continued bad press like this will be used as propaganda for the detriment of our public schools. I grow tired of explaining to people that it is not our public schools that are failing, rather it is our society as a whole that is failing our students. I want to say this too. The vast majority of our students are very serious and focused on graduating, on doing well in school. All students deserve an education, all of them also deserve a second chance. But not all students can adapt and succeed in the public school setting. There are, of course, some students who violate school rules and protocols on a regular basis. These students likely require a different educational setting in order to achieve success. But the process to accomplish this seems to be cumbersome and data-intensive. As such, administrators and teachers are spending more time addressing the behavior of a very small number of students than they are educating the majority of their students. This is also contributing to the charter school exodus. Our children are our most important resource, and we should be investing in them through providing them with the best possible public education. As Sitting Bull said, "Let us put our minds together and see what life we will make for our children." Thank you.
Hello. My name is Thomas Kervanderzij. I live at 46 Arnold Avenue in Cranston. But Monday through Friday, I'm across the soccer field there at Villanova Middle School, where I teach seventh grade social studies. About a week ago, us teachers received an email and noticed that all of the bathrooms at Villanova would be closed except for one. So for the last week, a school, a middle school of 700 students has been using one girl's and one boy's bathroom. I've been told when talking to our administration that the decision, that this decision is above their heads, at some level, a district-level decision. And that's what's controlling why this is happening and if and when it stops. So I'm here to request that somebody come and meet with the teachers at Villanova Middle School. I think we would love, or I would love, to hear, one, why this decision was made in the first place, two, what we're trying to accomplish at Villanova, and three, why we've decided that restricting students' access to use the bathroom is the most effective way to accomplish our goals. I can only speak for myself when I say that on a fairly regular basis over the last week, I've had students who are literally squirming in their seats because they have not been able to access the bathroom that now regularly has a line. I had a situation recently where a student who has several, last year had several incidences where he had accidents in school, could not access the bathroom for what I will say were ten very, very tense moments, minutes, sorry. So he was able to go. As a teacher, we learn very rapidly that if one student is misbehaving, screaming and punishing the entire class of students is a fast way to only accomplish dividing yourself with students. So again, I can only speak from my perspective and my experiences. But I think I would love to request that whoever is making the decision about our bathrooms come meet and talk about when and how our bathrooms can reopen. Thank you.
So my name is Alentery. I am the chief operating officer of the district, and I received concerns from the custodial department regarding the Villanova bathroom situation. I received a request from the administration, well, a secret request from the custodians concerning that exact issue. And my response to the administration, so I am, I'm Vicentery, I'm the person that made the call, I didn't say close all the bathrooms for one. My response was, "Please use the system that Hamlet Middle School uses and close bathrooms as necessary." That does not mean close all the bathrooms for one. But as I'm sure you can imagine, there was quite a bit of vandalism going on in the bathrooms. We need to have a system in place, not just the administration, but our staff, our teachers, it's a community, to regulate who's going to the bathrooms, when they're going to the bathrooms, to ensure some type of accountability because they have ruined the bathroom, to ensure that educated buildings, some of you've been nodding your heads, our bathrooms often times have been vandalized. We've had plumbing issues. We just had one recently at the high school because things were flushed down, and pits shouldn't be flushed down in the plumbing. So that's happened across the district. There is a program called E-Haul Pass. It allows the administration and teachers to regulate who can and can't go to the bathrooms and when, and which bathrooms they should be going to. So there was no concrete directive from the administration to close all but one bathroom. That, I think, might be a mixed communication. The communication out was, "Please use the system that Hamlet uses." Hamlet uses E-Haul Pass, as does our high school. It's designed for regular use of the bathrooms. It's also designed to regulate if teachers are fully utilizing the system with administration to limit who's in your hallways at the secondary level. If it's implemented and totally used, you can cut down not just at the middle school level, but at the high school level, who's out on passes in the hallways throughout the day. Because you can't get a pass unless you electronically request it, and the teacher approves it, and the administration should be able to monitor it from a central location. So I apologize, it was a miscommunication, but it wasn't a directive of just close all bathrooms for one. And I firmly resolve that I'm the person that sent that email, just so it's clear, and I stand by what I sent. We can't keep having our bathrooms vandalized. We need to restrict the access and create an accountability system. And I think the computer system is a good way to do it. Perhaps maybe that necessarily can get over the set. So I hope that answers any questions on that matter. Thank you.
My name is Christine Rogers. Please speak into the microphone. Hi, my name is Christine Rogers, and I used to work for the Woodsocket School Department. So I started in 2010, had a hall monitor. So as the years went by, the 10 years there, so as the years went by, I seen they needed help in the hallway. So I would volunteer, go in the hallways every day to keep our children safe. I'm also a parent, I was seen in there as well. So for the teachers, the principals, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Ernest, so as I cleared the hallways out and I created bonds with our students, our trust, my boss Al, he came to me, well, to Mr. Ernest one day and was like, "Well, Ms. Rogers can't be in the hallway no more." But you knew I was there for three consecutive years straight, clearing up those hallways of safety of our faculty, our students, and everything. So my hands was forced to step out because I'm not cleaning tables and dumping trash. You know, and I feel like if I'm stepping out, I took the monastic because who's there helping those students get through the day when they're angry? They would come to me and say, "Well, Ms. Rogers, this is going on." And if I feel though it's necessary, I'm going to Mr. Ernest and I'm going to report before the police come up here, before our kids come and stop each other and shoot each other. You know what I mean? But you're going to put a position in effect to hire someone from the outside to come in and doing what I'm doing for our students. Instead of, and I said, "Well, what's, what's the qualifications for the job? If I'm doing it now, what's the qualification?" And they were like, "Oh, well, you need a master's degree, this is not, why would you have a 60 to an 80-year-old retired police officer in here with young students, young adults? And I'm already in here volunteering, doing the work, honestly, without the pay." I don't care about the pay, I care about our students, to be safe and achieve their goals in life, to graduate and to go on in life of the future. I would think that's fair for me, knowing I dedicated my time after Woodsocket High School to be treated like that, you know?
Hi, I'm Mr. Chair at Woodsocket Middle School in Villanova. I just want to preface by saying that I'm in my seventh year here at Woodsocket, and I love, I love my students, I love my school, I love my coworkers, and I just love everything about what I do. But I am very tired of reading about this district, not the news. It's saddening and exhausting, reading about the constant negative things happening. And I understand, and I promote the very positive things that happen in our district all the time, but there is a lot of very overwhelming and very negative news that is coming on in our district. And what it comes down to is, we just really need to get control of our buildings. We have students like Natalie sitting up there, who works, who has worked hard every single day of her life, who has, you know, endured extreme, you know, adversity throughout her entire life. And students like her don't deserve to be surrounded by chaos. They deserve their school to be a safe and comforting place for them, where they can really excel to their fullest extent. And I understand that there's, you know, a whole host of legal regulations, state, Department of Education, that, you know, put a lot of pressure on the school districts to keep all the students in school all the time. And I understand that, you know, makes things very difficult for you guys up there and over here, but, you know, at some point, you know, something needs to give. The safety and well-being of our students, our staff, our buildings is paramount, above all, really. And, you know, no learning at all can happen if the school is unsafe and chaotic. We need sensible and common sense and reasonable consequences for students who repeatedly demonstrate that they are unwilling or unable to be functional members of our educational community. The fact of the matter is, we have some students who are just unable to do that. And keeping them in school where they get set off, where they set off other students, where they grab other kids' hair and throw them against lockers, as some of the recent videos have shown, it's just, it's not good for anybody. It's doing those kids a disservice, it's doing all the other kids who are just trying to scrape by and do their best a disservice. And, you know, I'm not saying we need to, like, suspend kids or expel them or whatever, but we need some kind of, we need to do something different than what we're doing. I don't necessarily have the answers myself, but what we're doing is, it's just not working. You know, we used to have a very robust behavioral interventions program. Unfortunately, due to state funding cuts, the loss of grants, we've had to tremendously tear that program down. You know, we used to have three behavioral interventions at Villanova, now we have one, and she's split between certain other self-contained rooms in the rest of the building. So effectively, we sometimes just don't have a behavioral interventionist. And I understand that at the high school, they're also way down compared to what they used to have. And I understand those cost money, but there's tons of grants out there, and there are opportunities to get funding to do this. And I hope we're really actively looking to secure grants and funding, even like a year-by-year basis, to kind of fill these gaps, because these people are very necessary in our building, and they can really help put out fires before they get to, you know, the point that they did on Monday. You know, I don't have any social media at all, I don't have Facebook, Snapchat, whatever, but even me somehow found out that through friends and whatever, that there were multiple videos on Facebook of all places of our students at the high school getting into these brawls that happened this week. And it's very disheartening to get texts and messages from friends saying, who, not even involved at all with Woodsocket Education, saying, "Did you see those creepy fights that happened in your district?" And I'm like, "Well, now I did." And it's just, it's very disheartening, and it just doesn't need to happen. Because I understand there's a lot of pressure from, you know, things way outside of our district, but, you know, we need to push back because it's just, it's not working, and it's not good for our schools. Thank you.
Hello. Heather Neal, 11 Freedom Court, Johnston Island. I've been an educator in Woodsocket for 27 years, and anyone who knows me knows how much I love this work. I feel fortunate every day to work with both teachers and students in this community. For more than 15 years, long before COVID, WED has recognized a growing set of factors affecting our children's development. Excessive screen time is one, but so are many other social changes that challenge students' abilities to regulate emotions, communicate respectfully, and build healthy relationships. The isolation of COVID only intensified these challenges. As a instructional coach, I've worked side by side with teachers and students to overcome these barriers. In response, the way we teach has evolved to include explicit structures that nurture the life skills students need to thrive. This approach provides a roadmap to help them reclaim focus, engage in meaningful dialogue, and grow into responsible, capable adults by developing self-management, collaboration, critical thinking, and empathy. The fights we're seeing today are not just a discipline problem, they're a symptom of broader societal shifts. Moving forward will be challenging for all of us because it requires providing consistent structures at school and at home that give students the daily opportunities to practice communication, problem-solving, and self-control. Over the past three years, teachers who implemented these structures have seen measurable results. Their students and families have even spoken to this school committee about the positive impact of building new skills. Those successes paved the way for this to become the first year our entire district will use these supports in every classroom. I share this because it takes all of us, families, students, and educators, setting shared expectations and modeling healthy habits. If we remain consistent, we can help every child grow into a thoughtful, resilient learner and caring member of our community. Lastly, I'd just like to say that I hope some of the positive of tonight's meeting makes the news as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Moilen, and I'm a parent of a sixth-grade student at Woodsocket Middle School at Villanova. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I come with a sincere concern about student restroom access at the school. Recently, I learned, not through any formal communication from the school or district, but directly from my child, that students have been restricted to a single restroom per gender on the second floor. The girls' restroom reportedly contains only three stalls. The number of fixtures available for the boys has not been disclosed. This policy affects approximately 550 students, according to the National Center for Educational Statistics, I believe that's 23, 24 here. As a parent, I find it troubling that significant change to student access and daily routines was not proactively communicated. Transparency is essential, especially when policies impact student health, dignity, and learning. Under the Rhode Island State Building Code, which adopts the International Plumbing Code, educational facilities must provide one toilet per 50 students, one toilet, or, sorry, per female students, one toilet or urinal per 50 male students, one lavatory per 100 students of each gender. For a student body of 550, the minimum requirements are six toilets for girls, three toilets and three urinals for boys, and three lavatories per gender. Restricting access to only three stalls for girls, and potentially fewer for boys, does not meet these standards. It may also conflict with Rhode Island General Law 16-21-3, Health and Sanitation in Schools, ADFA Accessibility Standards, Rhode Island Fire Safety Code regarding safe egress and occupancy. Beyond the numbers, I ask you to consider the daily experience of our students. Long lines, missed class time, and discomfort are becoming routine. Some students are choosing to avoid restroom use altogether. That's not a learning of diet right, that's a stressor. I know this committee cares deeply about student safety and dignity, that's why I'm confident it'll treat this issue with urgency it deserves. I respectfully ask the school committee to review the current restroom access policy at Villanova and Hamlet, audit the school's compliance with Rhode Island Plumbing and Building Codes, restore full access to all available restrooms, or provide a written explanation supported by inspection reports, disclose the number of operational restroom fixtures currently available to the students by gender, and also improve communication from calls so that families are informed of changes that affect student health and daily routines. If this issue cannot be resolved internally, I'll seek help to escalate this issue to the Rhode Island Department of Education and the Department of Health for formal review. I'm not here to criticize, I'm here to advocate. Our students deserve facilities that reflect the care and standards we hold to every other aspect of their education. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Robert Stewart, president of Woodsocket Teachers Guild and social studies teacher at Woodsocket High School. It's my privilege to be a teacher. This past March 26, 2025, the educators of Woodsocket attended school committee here to discuss safety issues. And at the time, we were deeply concerned about a child we thought was dangerous and disregarded. Hundreds of educators came out that night to share some of their stories. Some wore t-shirts that read, "Keep Teacher Safe." I still remember that night like it was yesterday. We should note that the guild tonight did not call membership up. They would have come, they would have come. There was a report from the media that we called out our membership. We did not. That's inaccurate. This past Monday, though, there were several fights, and over a dozen students were arrested at Woodsocket High School. at Wunsakke High School. I teach at the high school and I was proud of the teachers and parents that day. I know one teacher who attempted to help and ended up in the hospital. I went to visit her, but I was told she was already at school. So I went and found her at school and I understood that she received a medical treatment and she returned to school on that same day. I just couldn't believe she did that. But this is an example of teachers going above and beyond every day to support our students and to keep faith, to keep faith with each other. They show up. The, the absenteeism at the high school is remarkably low. You look up the ride data on that, I'm just really proud of the teachers, how we've been showing up. Um, tonight, just want to share a few thoughts on school safety, some measures that I think can be taken right away. I know since then, the targeted kiosks moved in the front hallway. I think we can strengthen cafeteria security, increase adult presence, and secure the back door. Um, I, and recognize that there is a connection between smartphones and teacher and student safety. We, we've seen whether the students are coordinating the fights with phones, whether they're incentivized to videotape for views, likes, and comments, um, we think our safety is compromised with the phones. There, the districts who wrote out of it are experimenting on ways to deal with cellphones. And I'm hearing tremendous progress, like words like night and day. When we taught this way at the high school, now it's like this without the cellphones. And it's not even one person's fault. We're gonna need everybody, everybody's support if we're gonna get there. Um, we need the student support, the family's support, the public's support, the mayor's support. We need the city council's support and our school committee's support. And we may need some technology. I don't know if it's gonna be yonder pouches or what, but when it's worked, it changes everything. And I think that seeing the fights as we're seeing them and seeing the cellphones where it's being used should cause us a moment to pause. I've been asked if we need another resource officer. It's a tough question, especially this week where we needed police support. And I wanted to clear, Wunsakke Police were responsive, professional, and deeply grateful for their help. What teachers don't want to see is more resources pulled out of the classroom. For example, we didn't know this earlier this year, early childhood classes, you know, pre-K, K classes would receive paraprofessional support. They didn't. And a very good argument can be made that these children in these classes are most vulnerable, most vulnerable students. Lastly, I, I recommend that we utilize a school resource that will cost no money. The high school has four 30-minute common planning periods per week, roughly 16 periods per month. And these teachers, we've been asking and asking and asking to utilize at least two of these periods per month so teachers can provide input in front of the administration. Meetings after school are nowhere near as powerful as when you have the entire faculty together to address these issues. Dr. McGee, you have the ability tonight to clarify with Mr. Ernest to utilize the all-staff CPT time to get teachers' input on the safety of the school. Years ago, I witnessed these meetings, worked very well, and I would like to see them return. You see the Dean's of Discipline, you see the administrators, you see guidance, you see the questions come up and we learn from each other and we work together. We haven't been doing that in years. It's a simple solution, costs no money. We could be doing that right now. If safety is the primary concern, it absolutely should be. That's what we're here here tonight. Please utilize common planning time to bring the faculty together so we can work on these things together. There's a number of priorities that we could disagree about, what would make the school safer. Having these conversations, having regular meetings, not having them canceled, having regular meetings is, is a start. And it can't just be worse. We should and should partner together for our safety. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the school committee this evening? We've already been up, so...
Only one time?
No, we have only just one speech.
Good evening. Estelle Bongo, 648 Third Avenue, Wunsakke. I was born and raised in this city, fourth generation. We have the tools, I know we do here in the city. We need to just put, pull a little harder. We need to have more discipline in the schools. It's not getting any better with just saying, "Well, we have this, but we haven't, you know, um, set it aside. We set it aside, but we're not using it yet." No, this is, this is going to get worse before it gets better. And if you need people, like the lady had said, you know, have people walk the halls. Have somebody at each floor. If that's what it takes and people are willing to help you, then just do it. I don't know if you still have the, um, the AVO TC or whatever, if you have that anymore, but that, well, that was a blessing. I mean, come on, well, these are our children that are growing up. Sometimes the parents have to do what they can and the, the school has to continue. And, you know, we can't give up on our kids because that's our future. So please, be stern and just, you know, this is the way it is, this is the rules, and lay it out and don't say, "Oh, well, this was their first offense." No, uh-uh. No, first and last, that's what it was years ago. So have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the school committee for the first time?
Good evening. My name is Jay Thomas and I'm at 123 Baxter Street in Wunsakke. Um, I am, I'm sorry, I have two children as of right now that's in, I'm sorry, one is in, um, the high school and then I have one child over here at Villanova. Well, I had noticed about the, you know, about what happened at the high school. Um, to me, there is a lack, seriously, a major lack of accountability with the parents. When I was on Facebook, so many people came against the, you know, the schools, you know, the teachers, right? But there was, but no one took accountability as a parent and thought, "Well, you know what? Maybe it was me. Maybe I'm not doing what I should be doing at home." No accountability. So what the children do, you know, they go to school, act up, because they feel as if they can, you know, do whatever that they want to do. There is no accountability at home. There is no structure at home. And to me, as a parent of, you know, of three children, we gotta set a firm foundation at home so that when our children goes to school, they, they know how to behave and know how to conduct themselves as a responsible human being. Now, I'm not, you know, I mean, my children have never, you know, um, been in any kind of trouble, you know, but the one thing that I teach my children is to respect one another, is to respect adults. If you get a problem with your adult, come tell me and I will deal with them myself. But, you know, but as far as, you know, what I can see, I, you know, I am a mentor. I mentor young girls. And one day I had sat down with my, my daughter and I had asked her, "What, what, what can I do to help these young girls?" And the response I got was startling. My daughter came and told me, "They won't listen to you." Again, a lack of accountability at home. Us as parents have to do better for our children or else our children are going to, you know, you know, they are going to be, um, you know, those, those same criminals, you know, that's gonna be inside of these jails, you know, and, you know, unfortunately, and, you know, in the greatness they don't want to listen, there is no respect whatsoever. No respect, but us parents, we're not teaching them to respect one another. We're not teaching them how to respect the adults, so they are doing what they want to do. I have set up a program under my own nonprofit and under my own business, you know, to help mentor these young girls and, and also boys to learn how to respect themselves and also on how to love themselves. I feel as, you know, as that is a major part of their program now, that they all know how to love themselves and to respect themselves. Thank you.
Anyone else for the first time?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Thomas Harmon. I'm with the Mount Lions Institute. I really just want to take an opportunity to offer a solution or a, a part of a solution. Um, I represent an organization that has a outreach team that's trained in de-escalation, uh, mediation, and obviously Mount Lions training. Um, I'm not from this city and I have no way of shit or form trying to steal any thunder from any, uh, local community organization, but we have a trained staff that, um, that I would like to offer as part of the solution to help these kids in this community. We currently serve Providence, Kentucky, Central Falls, and Wunsakke. So, uh, there's, uh, able and willing, uh, trained staff that could maybe assist with the community leaders and families that are already trying to do this work with these kids. So I just want to offer a solution because I can hear the frustration. So thank you very much.
Anyone else for the first time?
My name is Cheryl Rodriguez, 73rd and North Main Street, Wunsakke, Rhode Island. I'm a parent of three students in the Wunsakke system, a sophomore, a middle school student, and a grade school, a grade school student. I'm addressing concerns of the fights that broke out the beginning of this week and how the administration downplays every single incident. For example, it says five fights broke out during this week's incidents when in fact there were at least 11 with at least 20 different students in all of the videos I have seen. This week, there are these fights, emails were being sent and updated at the numerous shelters in place and back, almost eight total in one day. Ending with the same story, those involved were moved and then structural time resumed. Thanking staff, administrators, and police for their assistance, but at no time nobody was in danger. Same old story, which is a lie. The thing is, I'm sure everyone here is aware that this is nothing new. Weekly, there are numerous incidences that occur, lockdown after lockdown, constant shelters in places, threats to our schools. This has been going on for a long time, not just this week or this year, and you are all very much aware of that. You want to remove all the cellphones because it hides the truth, but in actuality, it's the only protection most of these kids have. You have teachers being thrown on the floor and/or physically assaulted during these incidences. You have our police department being used and pulled away from where they are truly needed elsewhere. Innocent kids stuck in the crossfire of these fights, disruptions to learning, and many, many children, including my own, who has little, literal anxiety of even attending school. Teachers are giving up because even they do not have a voice that we heard. But as a parent who has one of my children in the Wunsakke High School, enough is enough. By law, I'm required to send my children to school where they should be safe and where you are all responsible for them. But what happens if I don't send my children to school? No fault of my own, but for the constant fear of something worse is going to happen. It is me who will receive a phone call or knock on my door, concerns, when it's the school that needs a good look. The school is not safe. It is not safe because the individuals that are causing such havoc make it that way. A lot of those individuals are repeat offenders with a slap on the wrist. Do you really, truly think suspension bothers them? Now are they there just free in the public to cause more havoc? Where are the metal detectors? A courthouse can have them or a sporting event and not the building where our children are required to attend? Where are the harsher punishments after repeated offenses or alternative learning? Perhaps they can learn from home, seeing home books are now a widely used option. Instead of hiding that the school department has zero control and worrying about numbers on paper and attendance, start finding a solution and implementing it, then maybe, just maybe, your numbers and attendance will start rising because this has been going on far too long.
Um, I live in Lincoln, but I run the Laramie project at 122 North Main. And prior to that, I was the unit director of the Boys and Girls Club, um, for 20 years. So I have a deep relationship, um, with a lot of these kids. I know a lot of these educators and, um, a shout out to the Wunsakke teachers because I have seen firsthand what they deal with. I like to say this, um, tonight, December 4th, 2019, changed the trajectory of my life. For anyone that doesn't know, it was a day that a student, a 17-year-old girl, was actually shot and killed, um, in the city of Wunsakke. And since then, community-wise, there's been little to nothing done and the violence just progresses. The young people that are, you know, perpetrating this in the school continue over and over and putting the, you know, 1,500 other students at risk when this is just a handful of young people. So I really think and I hope that this maybe will be a wake-up call. I know myself and others in the room have been doing this for many years and laid the groundwork for a lot of work that's being done right now. But I hope that people continue to take it seriously because Naisha will not be the last person that we see and then not the last young person that we lose in this community.
Anyone else for the first time?
My name is Patrick McGee, Superintendent of Schools in the Society of Education Department. I've got quite a list here of talking points. Before I get into that, however, I want to start by talking about the situation with the bathrooms at Villanova Middle School. Um, I was not aware of that. I know Mrs. Natariani spoke and explained that situation, but I can assure you that this week I will be addressing that with the administration of Villanova Middle School. Want to talk a little bit about the fights that occurred at Wunsakke High School on Monday. But to set the record straight, um, please do not think that I'm here to make any excuses. Uh, not. There were five fights. They were separate fights and there were 13 arrests. That's unacceptable. Clean and simple. The fights involved some students who were new to our district, from other communities, but again, that's no excuse. The fights did not include any weapons, thank God. I want to thank the Wunsakke Police Department. I want to thank the Wunsakke teachers and staff, Wunsakke High School teachers and staff, and the administrators for their assistance. And mostly, I want to thank the students because as everybody here this evening very eloquently spoke about the fact that enough's enough. There are students, the vast majority of our students who attend Wunsakke High School are great kids. They come to learn, they come to support, and be positive students and role models in our community. So I want to thank them for their support. Believe it or not, at the high school, the school year started pretty good, um, until Monday. But again, I'm not making excuses. I'm, I'm just simply saying... But again, I'm not making excuses, I'm just simply saying that happened. Let me, let me talk a little bit about the history of, of fighting, not only in the school department, but in the community. Because this is a community problem, make no mistake about it. I own what's happening in my schools, but this is not just a problem limited to the schools in Wunsacque. This is a pandemic in our community. But I'm the leader, and I've got to try to figure out a way to work with everyone so that this can stop. For about the last five years, probably longer, we've seen an immense uptick in violence and fights, especially at the secondary level, the middle schools, and certainly the high school, and our community. There are gangs in this community, that doesn't help. Again, it's not an excuse, but let's, let's not fool ourselves, there are. There are adults in this community who groom students from our high school, our middle schools, and yes, even our elementary schools, to get involved in gangs. And I'm not saying that what happened on Monday was gang-related, I can't say that for sure, so I'm not going to stand here and say it was, and I'm not going to say that it was. Let me talk a little bit about the community with respect to fighting. I don't know how many of you here, I mean, it seems like a lot of you here see the social media, I mean, how, how, how can you not see it, unfortunately? That's a cancer on society, as far as I'm concerned. When you have parents, as occurred two days ago, driving their children to Dunn Park to fight, all the while videotaping it and posting it, is disgusting. Yes, we have a lot of work to do in the Wunsacque Education Department, and yes, that's on my shoulders, and I take responsibility. But we can't do this alone. We have to have the support and the cooperation of our parents, because we're not the ones driving them to Dunn Park or to Cass Park to fight, filming it. Parent involvement is critical. So you might be asking, well, okay, yeah, what has the Wunsacque Education Department done over the years to try to curb the violence, both within our schools and outside of our schools? Because make no mistake about this, the, the amount of intervention, the amount, the number of mediations, the amount of counseling that our hard-working and dedicated counselors, social workers, teachers, and administrators do on a daily basis is astounding. The number of incidents that are avoided because our dedicated, hard-working professionals who work well beyond the school hours is admirable, but unfortunately, it's necessary. Gentlemen from the Nonviolence Institute, we've worked with the Nonviolence Institute for about the last four years, they've been very helpful here in the community. Again, I say community, they've been, they're in our, they've been in our schools, they're in our community. I have a superintendent's safety cabinet meeting that's been meeting for about three or four years. This is a group of individuals where we meet every other week, and we track the violence that's occurring in our schools, the violence that's occurring in our community, so that we can try to be proactive and get out in front of it. All I'm simply saying is, is I don't want people to think that the Wunsacque Education Department is doing nothing. Because we, the results unfortunately don't show it, but we work extremely hard. But it can't just be on our shoulders. Many times over the last three years, Mr. Quadros, our Director of Social Emotional Learning, our principals from the middle schools and the high school, have met and meet with students who fight. So students aren't typically suspended if they get into a fight. Before they're readmitted, they meet with me, in my office on Fridays. And I can tell you that my Fridays are pretty much devoted solely to that, one after another, after another, after another. I'm getting sick and tired of the excuses from parents, and I'm getting sick and tired of excuses from students. It has to stop. It's not fair to our students and to our staff who come to school each day and want to learn and get an education and want to teach our students. I've had enough of it. Somebody earlier said, "We suspend a student, we suspend," and, and they come back, and it happens again, and we suspend, and they come back, and it happens again. And I'm not saying here that we're going to break the law, because there are laws, there are laws that we have to follow. But I can tell you this, moving forward, we've had conversations today, I, I, as the mayor spoke, had a meeting with the mayor, the police chief, some district staff, I met with the union president, Mr. Stewart, today. And I'm going to tell you, moving forward, we are looking at if students are involved in these, in these fights, and certainly if there were peers, but not necessarily, if we can establish that a student is a demonstrable threat, then there is a very strong opportunity or, or possibility that they will be removed from the school setting, potentially up to the remainder of the school year. I've had it, this is it. I am sick and tired of this behavior, we need the parents to work with us, because we can't do it alone. But I'm telling you, I'm not going to sit by any longer watching these kids coming to our schools and continue to disrupt and get into fights and cause havoc, because our kids don't deserve it, and our teachers don't deserve it. Briefly talking about cellphones, that's a conversation we're going to have this year. Mr. Stewart and others, I think Mr. Andrews spoke of that. Enough's enough. There are other districts, I realize that we're a large district, we have a large high school, but I'm not using that as an excuse. We have to do something with cellphones moving forward. Yes, we have a policy, that policy says students are not supposed to have cellphones, and somebody used the analogy of, you know, just the inability to, 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 to control that. But I can tell you that I will be meeting with our policy subcommittee and the school committee to discuss the use of cellphones in our schools next year, because I don't believe every student needs a cellphone in school, they don't. In fact, when we do have emergencies, they get in the way. Oftentimes, false information is shared, and it's not helpful. But I'm telling you, things are going to change, and I'm, and I'm letting those students and their families know that we're taking back the middle schools and the high school, and this is going to end. Thank you.